I will call tonight's meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bibla?
Here.
Mr. Champy?
Here.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Here.
Mr. Webby?
Here.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Here.
Mrs. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Nardone?
Here.
Mr. Boone?
Here.
Mr. Macri?
Here.
Nine members present.
An executive session was held before the board meeting of March twentieth, twenty twenty-five regarding contracts, personnel, actions, and pending litigations. Tonight, we seek an approval of the corrected January treasurer's report and the February treasurer's report. I'll also be looking for the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. We'll start out our presentations tonight with our student rep, Mrs. Gabrielle White.
Good evening. I'm Gabriella White, and I'm a sophomore here at Crestwood. There are many things happening around the Crestwood campus, from sports to clubs to student involvement. Crestwood's arts programs are thriving. There are, they recently had Abby Christuara, Mia Christuara, Pacey Clower, and Maya Shavka have their arts selected to be exhibited at the forty-third annual Suzanne Maria Rosetta Memorial Juryed Art Exhibit through a jurying process. Not only this, but they also have received special awards for their artwork that will be displayed at the Schoolman Gallery at LCC. The Avedum program continues to make the Crestwood campus a positive and welcoming environment. They recently had a stuffed animal drive where they collected stuffed animals to go into the Gattens office. They continue to not only better themselves, or not only to better their school, but to better themselves by going to clinics and conferences. Their leaders recently attended Avedum's annual conference. At this conference, Allison Zavacki, the student founder of Crestwood's Avedum program, had the opportunity to speak as one of the Keystone speakers. Not only is this impressive to be speaking in this group, but she was the only student speaker. Congratulations, Allison. The Enviro Club is also bettering Crestwood through recycling. They recently met their goal of collecting a thousand pounds of plastic and are determining where to put their bench made from their recycled plastic. We recently also had forty-two students attend the Pennsylvania Junior Academy of Science Regional Competition. They were very successful as they had thirty-six students earn a first-place award as well as a qualification for the state competition in May. Anna and Trima also earned scholarships. This year, the boys volleyball team has chosen to do a service project to benefit local veterans. Their inaugural Volley for Veterans game will be held on April twenty-fourth, their home game against Burke. Their goal is to honor and benefit those who have served our country. All of their proceeds from their clothing sale, which is published on distinct social media sites, along with the money raised from that night of the game, through basket raffles, fifty-fifty drawings, bake sales, and donation jars, will be donated to benefit the Wokesbury VA nursing home residents. The track and field and boys and girls tennis teams have been diligently working as their season is hastily beginning. We wish all the spring sports good luck and success with their upcoming seasons. As spring sports are starting, I would like to take a second to reminisce on the success of our winter sports. Our competitive cheerleading team ended their season placing fourteenth in the nation, beating out sixty-two teams. The boys and girls wrestling teams had a victorious season as well. They had Rachel Shoemaker and Kyle Drina take first place, qualify for regionals, and take the title of district champion at the PIAA District Two Tournament. They also had Emma Self, Alexis Richmond, Samara Bailey, Terran Kacilakic, and Lincoln Bibla qualify for regionals. Kyle and Lincoln also made it to states. I would also like to take a second to specifically congratulate the girls' basketball team, as they are making Crestwood history. They are the first ever district champions, and they continue their historic journey as they are playing in the PIAA State Semifinals this Saturday. We are wishing them the best of luck and hope they know that the Crestwood community is behind them. Our student government is in the process of planning the third annual Comets of Source Day. We will continue to showcase the events that everyone knows and loves, as well as some new stuff. We have collected feedback and are keeping everyone's favorite parts, as well as doing the best we can to fit every request to make this day the best yet. We hope with these additions, we will be able to keep this day fresh and fun and add to the day's excitement. Whether it's in sports, clubs, or even in the classroom, students here at Crestwood find their way to excel past their limits and be the best they can be. There are so many amazing members of our community representing Crestwood and upholding its standards. We can thank our amazing teachers, staff, and our fellow students for their ever-growing support, which helped us get there. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Very well done. We'll move on to a special section of our meeting tonight. We're going to be honoring Mr. Eric Idledinger. The district's going to present a plaque in honor of Mr. Idledinger, a lifelong public servant and dedicated school board member for over thirty years, recognizing his unwavering commitment and his contributions to the district. To lead off this recognition, I'd like to introduce our state representative, Mr. Alec Rankovich, who's here to present a proclamation from the state.
Good evening, members of the board and members of the public. Always good to be here with so many familiar faces, and I'm honored to be here to be recognizing the legacy of Mr. Idledinger. As I was going through writing the House of Representatives citation, I thought I was going to run out of room on the paper for how much we have to recognize him and his family for. So if you would please indulge me, I'd like to read what we call a citation. A citation is the highest honor we can bestow upon somebody as a member of the House of Representatives, and these proclamations are signed by the Speaker of the House, and they are read into the record in the House, and you can find them in the journal going back hundreds and hundreds of years. So it is truly an honor to be presenting this to his family. And it reads, "Whereas the House of Representatives of Pennsylvania is always pleased to acknowledge those individuals who, through their dedicated civic endeavors and professional excellence, contribute to the well-being of their communities and ultimately to all the people of this Commonwealth. And whereas Eric Idledinger is being honored upon thirty years of dedicated and distinguished service to the Crestwood School Board, and whereas a graduate of Crestwood High School, Mr. Idledinger served as senior class president in nineteen seventy. He worked as a police officer for the Fairview Township Police Department for thirty-one years before serving with the Luzern County Sheriff's Department for fifteen years, from which he retired at the rank of lieutenant deputy. For the past thirty years, Mr. Idledinger has served as a member of the Crestwood School Board, completing several terms as president and working closely with school board members to oversee numerous initiatives, including the complex middle school expansion and stadium lighting projects. Active, he served as a board member for both Mountain Top Hose Company Number One and Mountain Top Area Community Ambulance Association. Throughout his career, Mr. Idledinger has demonstrated remarkable knowledge, ability, and integrity in carrying out his many responsibilities, thus earning the respect and gratitude of all those who have received the benefit of his tireless devotion to duty. And now therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania congratulates Eric Idledinger upon his richly deserved recognition, commends his exemplary record of service, and lasting contributions to the lives of the students, faculty, and staff of the Crestwood School District, and offers our best wishes and a rewarding future to his family." And I'd like to present this to his family if anybody would like to come up here to receive this initiative. Please give them a round of applause. And if the board would allow me, it wouldn't be fair of me to not recognize the families and the students that are here for the Crestwood Students of the Month. Congratulations to them as well.
Thank you very much, Alex. I'd like to move on to the schools' presentation. Mr. Boone and Mrs. Bibla will present.
Can we have the family come back up, please? We're going to read this first. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to make this presentation. The family will get a plaque, and we will have one hung here in the school once we determine where it goes. Under the picture of Eric, it says, "A life spent in service is a life well-lived." A lot of what I'm going to read, this is on the plaque, Mr. Rankovich stole a lot of the thunder. Eric Idledinger, my children, three of them graduated with two of Eric's children, and I served one year as an assistant basketball coach on the police team and coached one of his children that year. So like I said, it is an honor. Eric Idledinger grew up in Fairview Township, a stellar three-port athlete, football, basketball, and track. Eric exhibited his leadership ability at an early age as he capped his high school career as president of the senior class of nineteen seventy. He began his community service by starting a thirty-one-year career as a Fairview Township police officer and became the youngest member ever of the Crestwood School Board. He served as a Crestwood School Board member for thirty years, including multiple terms as president of the school board. During his tenure on the school board, Eric was instrumental in the planning of and daily construction oversight of the middle school addition to the high school. However, the achievement Eric was most proud of regarding his Crestwood tenure was the establishment of Crestwood as one of, if not the highest academic-achieving schools in Luzern County on a yearly basis. Eric's community service was not limited to Crestwood. He served fifteen years as a Luzern County sheriff, retiring as a lieutenant. He also served as a board member and president of the Mountain Top Hose Company Number One, served as board member of the Mountain Top Area Community Ambulance Association, and reorganized the Mountain Top Historical Society. In his role with the Mountain Top Historical Society, Eric obtained a donation from the Reading and Northern Railway of the caboose seen at the entrance to Mountain Top on Route three oh nine. In honor of his work, the Mountain Top Historical Society established the Eric Idledinger Memorial Scholarship, which is presented annually to a deserving Crestwood senior.
Thank you, and again, it was an honor to have Mr. Idledinger as part of the school district and greatly appreciate all his time and service to the district. I'll now move on to our superintendent's report. Mrs. Malazo?
Thank you. I have the privilege to honor our sixth grade soaring comets for Fairview and Rice Elementary. I'm going to start with Fairview Elementary. May I have Sadie Snyder? Do you want to come up front here? You want to stay there? Whatever you want to do. So Sadie, come on, it's all right.
We won't fight.
So I get to share what the teachers said about you and how you earned the honor of soaring comet. So the teachers wrote about you that you are one of the soaring comets for the month of February. Your warm demeanor, your welcoming personality, and uplift those around. She is always the first to lend a hand or offer support to anyone in need. You have a drive and discipline, and they're both evident in the academic success and in your accomplishments in ice hockey. We want to thank you for your leadership, genuine smile that really lights up the room. Sadie is dedicated and a valuable player for the junior pen, so congratulations to you. Keep up the great work, Sadie. Our other soaring comet for the month of February from Fairview, we have Wyatt Marion. So Wyatt, I want to share what the staff wrote about you. So we want to highlight you and celebrate you. You exemplify the qualities of a dedicated student athlete. You demonstrate commitment and drive both in the classroom and on the soccer field. You are supportive, even keel demeanor, and inspires those around you, fostering a positive and encouraging environment. Outside of the classroom, Wyatt maintains a year-round commitment to soccer. So we celebrate you, congratulate you, and thank you. Next, I have Maya Blanchick. So Maya, Mrs. Clem wrote about you and nominated you for soaring comet. Maya, you are a remarkable student. You work hard daily and are eager to learn. You are kind, helpful, respectful. Maya works well with her peers and takes on leadership roles when a task is presented. Maya is very intelligent and shares her knowledge with her classmates. Maya, you are a role model for so many students. The sixth grade team is very proud of you. So congratulations. And our final soaring comet, we have Jack O'Neill. Come show everyone this shirt. Come on. This is a sixth-grade T-shirt. All right, so Wyatt, I'm sorry, Jack, they wrote that you are a phenomenal young man who Mr. Junus believes that you're extremely deserving of a soaring comet. Since day one, you've been asked to be focused, attentive, engaged in the classroom, discussing and making decisions with all kinds of activities. You are very thoughtful. You have relevant questions and are consistently displaying an eagerness to learn. Outside of the classroom, Jack, you have a positive example for your classmates to follow. You're always kind, respectful, polite, not only to your peers, but to also the teachers. In addition, you're always courteous. You have a great sense of humor, and Mr. Junus enjoys speaking with you. In the sixth grade class, they stress the four Rs. I'm sure you could recite them, but they are to always be respectful, responsible, ready, and a good role model. So congratulations. Keep up the great work. So families, you're more than welcome to stay and hear the rest of the report or be a part of the board meeting, but you're also welcome to go. But a final congratulations to all of our soaring comets. Thank you for attending. I just have a couple announcements for everyone and just a couple highlights. I want to thank the Rotary Club. They were a part of a donation for our secondary campus school nurse. They were just here last week on Friday, and they donated hygiene items for our students. We want to thank them for their generosity. I want to congratulate, I got to be a part of it today, Mrs. Evans at a Fairview. She was our rock star teacher from KRC, so we want to congratulate her on earning that prestigious honor and nomination through her students and her families. And finally, just to highlight Footloose. So if you remember, we talked about having a spring play that is coming up next. It's actually on April fourth and fifth. So on Friday, the fourth, at seven PM is their first showing, and then on Saturday, they're actually having two showings. They're having one start at two and one at seven PM. Different than the last play is we're having middle school students be a part of it as well. So it's middle school and high school students. So good luck to them. I just want to make sure everybody has those dates as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malazo. We're moving on to our committee section of the meeting. Please remind public and our guests, testimony is limited to three minutes. Please, at this part, only to agenda items only. A person should come to the podium and please state and spell their name, address, and as well if they're speaking for an organization, and the name of that organization. We'll start tonight's committee reports. Financial planning, Mr. Nardone.
Thank you. I will be seeking approval for items one and two under the financial planning committee. Seek any questions from the board regarding those? None? Any questions from the public?
Ma'am, will you come speak to the podium, please, so that it could be captured on video?
Dolores Gagaris. Number two, agreement with the Meadows. Is that a nursing home?
No, that is a potential placement for a student.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the public? Seeing none, we can move on.
Thank you. Moving on to transportation, Mrs. McCurdy.
Thank you. I'll be seeking approval for item number one. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to policy, Mr. Boone.
I'll be seeking consideration and approval of items A, B, and C under number one. Questions or comments from the board? Or the public? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Thank you. Moving on to human resources, Mrs. Bibla.
I'll be seeking approval for items one through eleven. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Sir, will you just come to the podium?
My daughter's Sahara Mudlock, twenty-nine, Brook Lane in Fairview Township. She'd like to speak on the resignation of Mrs. Rector as a band director, and she'd like to make advocate for the band.
Hi, I'm Sahara Mudlock. I'm a seventh grader here at Crestwood. I'm a band member. I play clarinet. My concern here is that band will not be here by the time I graduate. I would like to speak to you about some things. I had had help from students and adults in making this presentation. I want our performing arts to be better here at Crestwood. Our successes in the band, we improved in five out of six captions in marching bands since twenty twenty-two. We had twenty-three members in twenty twenty-four and thirty-one in twenty twenty-two. We marched parades, prep rallies, at all the school's events, and in the community, we have performed concerts and jazz combos. Fancy things we did this year, we marched with college students at East Charlesburg University. We watched twenty college marching bands all over east coast, and we talked to their college recruits. The problem here we have is better recruiting for the music department to get more members and excitement. I've had other kids tell me that they're not motivated to do things like band. They don't even know what their options are, especially in middle school. Music at elementary school and middle school need to teach more performance things. I feel disappointed when I see other schools have bigger bands that even have football players marching in them. I feel our school does not care that much about our band. The goals of me talking here, having a performing arts during the school days and school hours for more enrichment programs and compete with other schools. Goal two, to improve the culture at Crestwood, to have more school spirit and create more opportunities to embrace for the school and the community. Conclusion, I want to share what one of my band friends, Cece, has told me. When I read this text message, I almost cried. She said, "I like band because everyone could be whoever they want without getting judged, even if we suck at hitting the high note or hitting the drum at the wrong time. They're there to help, even if it was a sports scenario, and you messed up over and over again. If you tried as hard as you can, they will whisper and roll their eyes and laugh as you..." roll their eyes and laugh as you're not good enough as them. But in the band, everyone tries their hardest, helps out, and if you need any help, just go to another band member. They will help. And me speaking here is me hoping to get a little more support in the band and having a little more, like, pride going to the band, because we do have instruments that are all, like, broken up, like one of our two bays has tape on it just because it's broken. We have an instrument that is from another school because one of our previous band members or band teachers has lost it and rented it to another school who has not given it back. Thank you for having me here today. I am very proud that I was able to speak in front of many of these people, because I know many people do not get this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask, I didn't hear your name, I'm sorry.
My name's Sahara Mudlock.
Nice, nice to meet you. I just want to tell you that I'm so proud of you for standing here and sharing and expressing your concerns. That took a lot of courage, so I'm very proud of you for that. I just want to highlight a couple things that I'm not sure, maybe you are aware, but if not, I think it's important that you know. At the secondary campus for next school year, we have a music teacher coming to the secondary campus, okay? I didn't know if you knew that. We have exciting opportunities in our seventh grade and eighth grade wheel. Music is going back into the wheel, the special rotation, for those that don't know what the wheel is. So that, I'm excited to have that come back. We have two exciting courses to start next school year. That came from a lot of feedback from the students, talking to colleges and universities. I personally made those connections. One of the courses is called Music Technology. Already purchased the Mac computers by the generosity of the Jersey Mikes. So you guys are going to have an opportunity to learn to music produce. You'll be able to play your instruments, record, and layer that music and create beautiful music with, through the teacher. So that's one course that will be brought back. The second course that we have is the music composition and writing as well. So learning how to create the music, how to write the notes, understanding what process that takes. So I'm excited that we're investing into that, and this board here has supported that initiative. You highlight Ms. Redker. I'm very disappointed, upset that she's leaving too. I think she did a great job her first year, but, you know, unfortunately, sometimes, you know, we do have resignations. I've already connected with the band booster. We're meeting on Monday. There's an exciting opportunity. I do not want to spoil it, but an exciting opportunity that I think you will hear very shortly about an experience that you can go on should the band booster and your new band director want to lead in this opportunity. I don't want to spoil it. So, but there's a lot of exciting, so I appreciate that. I was at Fairview Elementary, actually, today with Mr. Thomas, and I saw a flutist play, and it was amazing. So the work that's being done in elementary, I hope continues to grow. We have a pep rally tomorrow. Did you hear about that? You guys should be leading the pep rally, right?
We are, we should be, tomorrow, if we can. Uh, but we also, we got a member, we'll be much longer.
Great, yes. I wanted to make sure, because I asked for you guys to be a part of that, to kick it off for us. So I understand what you're saying. I think next year, we're going to have a lot of new and exciting things, and I hope we continue to grow. But your feedback, I'm always an emailer away, or, you know, Ms. Otero's office, you or any of your members that want to come and talk about it. But I'm just, I'm very proud of you to share that. So thank you for expressing that. But as far as the instruments go, I want to hear more about that, because I have not heard about the instruments. So make sure we connect on that later, okay? Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just say, I think you did a great job, and I love when the students come to talk to us, and you were fabulous. I think that was great. And I agree with Mrs. Malazo. This is the first I'm hearing about the instruments, too. So I really appreciate you bringing that to our attention. And the other point is, we will be posting for a new band director. So while I agree with Ms. Malazo, we are all very disappointed that our current one's retiring. We will be posting for a new one. And I mean, your timing, I'm so glad you came too, because things you brought up are things we can reach out to them in the interview process to find someone, you know, that's a great point, reach out more to students, kind of more recruitment. So I think those are great points, and I really thank you for bringing those to our attention. Thank you.
You know, Mrs. Campbell, what we could do is have the students be a part of the selection process. We do that with teachers.
That's a great idea.
Would that, would you like something like that? Would you come to that, if we asked you to come do an interview and be a part of that process?
Awesome. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And maybe while our current band director's still here, maybe we could get, like, an instrument list going of what's, what's broken or what's needed. We could, we could throw that on.
Awesome. All right.
Very good.
Any other questions? Seeing none.
Thank you. Again, thank you for bringing this to our attention, students, and you welcome back anytime. Academic programs, Champy.
I will be seeking approval for items one through five under Academic Programs Committee. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none. Any from the public?
Good evening. I'm Bill Kane, Crestwood Education Association. I just have a concern about number three. In fact, I did speak with some of you at the last board liaison regarding this issue. I'm, I have a love-hate relationship with FID days. I'm a firm believer that children deserve snow days. It's one of the greatest events of childhood. But to not, to not have that tool in your arsenal seems short-sighted to me. My understanding is if you get approved for flexible instruction days, you don't have to use them, correct? At least three times in my career, we have had situations where one building shut down, or two buildings shut down, and one was open. And a flexible instruction day would be a perfect remedy to a situation like that. So by not getting approval, you're leaving an educational tool out of your arsenal here. There are, there are reasons to use flexible instruction days, and by the way, they can be quite meaningful if they're implemented appropriately. I would say Crestwood's flexible instruction days were not the most meaningful ever planned during, during the past years, but it certainly is better, excuse me, it certainly is better than tacking days on at the end of the school year when students don't attend and testing's over and, and, and there's no continuity in the educational model. So I would, I would request that the board reconsider this, because you never have to use them, but if we have a power outage at Rice, those kids can go on with their education. You won't have a makeup day at the end of the year, which causes contractual issues, et cetera. All right, thank you.
Bill, just, we did, we have discussed that, and actually, last year, I brought up to Mrs. Malazo your exact point, like, should we have it for an emergency? And I know what was expressed to me was, but say there's an emergency, one we don't see coming, we're not planned for, since we're not really set up for FID days, would we be able to even implement it on a short notice?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, but I'm just saying, that's, that's.
I mean, we are one-to-one now. We're a one-to-one school district, so students have Chromebooks. For a teacher to adapt in that situation, we would probably have to give a two-hour delay to those students to get teachers ready. But I mean, there's no reason we can't have a FID day lesson plan in our back pocket. We have emergency lesson plans that we have to call off some of. So it's not, I don't see any reason why we would, with every student having a Chromebook, that we couldn't utilize that. Are there going to be kids left behind? Sure. Are there going to be kids who forget their Chromebook in their locker? Sure. But you're going to have 90% of the other students make up a day at the end of the year.
Mr. Kane, I just want to let you know, we do not have Chromebooks for kindergarten and first grade. So those would have to be a packet sent home in advance if it was something. But we actually, some people would say we went backwards. I would say we didn't go backwards. If you see what our second, third kindergartners, how they write, they need that time and learn to write and not using the computer. So we actually are not a one-to-one. We haven't been for, I believe it's the last two years, so they don't get their Chromebook now until they're in second grade.
Regardless, teachers can send packets home at the start of the year for those kids.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments from the public? Seeing none, continue on. Thank you. Moving on, co-curricular, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. I will be seeking approval of items one through three. Are there any questions from the board?
Just a comment or two. On item two, I want to thank Aaron for serving as club liaison. I know his heart is into this program. My understanding is he is continuing as a unified track team coach. And Mrs. Redker stepped in last year very late into the summer. I got nothing but positive reviews. I want to thank her for her year of service here at Crestwood also.
And any questions from the community? Nope, seeing none.
Thank you. Physical plant, Mr. Webby.
Physical plant will be seeking approval of items one through five. Any questions from the board? Questions from the public?
Dolores Gigeras. At the February 27, 2025 meeting, the school board approved to award the contract to Keystone Sports Construction for the track and turf project for $1,279,834.90. There is a rumor that a javelin pit has been added to this project that has not been mentioned as part of the turf and track project yet. Is everyone on the board aware of this being part of the project? How much does something like a javelin pit cost? The rumor is $60,000. Everyone knew there were problems with the track and turf, but where did this javelin thing come from? Could anyone tell me whose idea was to add a javelin pad as well as its intended location? And if the entire board even knew it was part of the project when they voted on it last month? Why was the public led to believe the project was only to replace failing turf in track, only to find out after the vote that it also included a brand-new javelin pad? If this rumor is true, why is everything being hidden from the public? Thank you.
So I will answer that. I don't like rumors, Ms. Gigeras, but I will, I will set the record straight for the rumors. So the board approved the track and turf project, pending solicitor review and approval, which we just had that process go through. There is an adder for the board to consider for a javelin, which is around $60,000, but the number that was board-approved did not include the javelin area. So that $1,200,000 number is track and turf. Should the board consider the javelin area, that will be on the agenda for board approval. But right now, that is not a part of the scope of the project.
Okay, but if it is, where would that money come from?
Correct. That would be a whole process and a conversation. It would be on the agenda, but it would just come out of the same location, which is the capital account. But right now, that's not in the scope. It was thought to be of an area of interest, but right now, that $1.2 million number, $1.2 million dollar number did not include the javelin. So it's partially right, the rumor, but not correct.
So it could be done.
It could be done, but it'll be an action item for transparency on an agenda.
Thank you.
Tom Stavitsky, I'm from Walden Park. Mr. Webby, with all these projects going around, could I go around and ask everybody sitting at the table if anyone has any vested interest in any kind of family or, you know, good friends that are involved with these projects? And I'd like to ask Mr. Benz, too, Ms. Malazo, and Mr. Slusser.
I can.
And I just, what, Mrs. Campbell, she would, I watched the meeting, and she did indicate about her husband's company the last time. And sometimes when you guys vote, you abstain and you don't say why. So I'd just like to know on the record.
I did say why.
No, I did, I just, I commended you for that. But I'm just saying, sometimes when you guys vote, you're abstaining and not saying why. Does anyone have any vested interest? Family?
I can address that. There's no one with any vested interest.
Okay, because there's a lot of projects going around. Thank you. Sorry. Any other questions from the public? I was into it. That concludes it.
Thank you. Technology Committee, Mrs. McCurdy.
No report tonight, thank you.
Behavioral Health and Safety Committee, Mrs. Jugater Zagurk.
Nothing for tonight.
Thank you. LIU, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. The minutes are on file in the superintendent's office and on the district website from the last meeting, and the next LIU meeting will be next week, Wednesday, March 26, in the LIU auditorium at 6:30.
Thank you. Wilkes-Barre CTC.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to mention our student Wyatt Dane. Wyatt won in the Machine Tool Technology Skills USA competition. He won second place in precision, excuse me, precision machining. So, well done, Wyatt. And the minutes are on file in the superintendent's office and on the district website, and the next CTC meeting is March 24, 2025, at the CTC at 5:30 p.m. Thank you.
Mrs. McCurdy, I have a question. I understand that we received an unbudgeted increase in our bill, in the recent bill from the CTC. Is there any background to what that is?
I don't know anything about it. I will have to look into it. Mr. McRae.
Do you know, Tom?
Sure, yeah, this one, I'll try not to get in the weeds too much on it, but we budget the CTC costs every year in June, after the CTC establishes their budget for the upcoming year. But then, when school starts the following year, three months in, the CTC then looks at enrollment from the different districts who send students there and makes an adjustment if what they assumed in their budgeting process does not align with the number of students from, I think there's six or seven districts that send kids to the CTC. So we received a notification several months ago saying our allocation was actually being dropped, because we had, not really because we had a drop in students, but Hanover area and Wilkes-Barre area had large increases. So when they distributed all those costs to all the, to the districts, ours went down. So that was good news. Then when the bill came in, the next bill came in, it was actually a little higher than what we had, had been communicated to us. So I reached out to the business manager at the CTC, and he said that the issue is the allocation that was done, although the enrollments changed, the dollar amount that they were multiplying it by was based upon the previous year instead of the current year's budget. So because of that, we had an increase in $32,000, but the, which is really much lower than the decrease that we had originally received. So net-net, it's a positive to our financials this year, just not as much as we first thought it was going to be when we received the first notification. Or I should say, the second notification, I guess. Does that answer?
And I think that that is, that does tend to happen every year, that those numbers will fluctuate based on.
Yeah, the enrollment adjustments definitely happens every year.
Not the price. Normally, the cost is right.
Correct.
I didn't know that there was a miscalculation on the front.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of it till now either. But thank you for letting me know.
Thank you. We'll now move on and take public testimony on any non-agenda items. Again, limited to three minutes. Please come to the podium and state your name and address, and if you're speaking for an organization.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lori Rozitski. I'm a math teacher at the high school, and I chair the math department. I chair the math department. Um, I recently, on March 4th, attended, uh, with a group of students, the LCTM, um, math competition at Wilkes University. This was the 77th year of the competition. I didn't realize it was that old. Um, I have some thank yous. Okay. I'd like to thank our superintendent, Mrs. Malazo, because at the committee meetings last week, she recognized our three students who placed at this competition. And, um, I appreciate you taking the time to recognize them. That was really nice. I appreciate it. I would also like to thank all of the students who, uh, attended the competition. It is an extremely difficult math test. And, uh, for the students to step out of their comfort zones and participate, um, it's, it's really outstanding of them. And we had a lot of fun. There was a lot of laughter too, um, not just, you know, seriousness with the math test itself. And I'd like to thank their families for supporting us as well. Um, in addition to what I've already mentioned, I'd like to thank the board. And, um, I would like to thank the math club and Mrs. Kreider for, um, sponsoring us and making, you know, our trip to the math competition possible. I'm always hitting up the math club for money, registration money, um, to attend these math competitions. So I really appreciate you making that happen for us. Um, I would also like to thank, um, the K through 12 staff, because I've, it's been mentioned more than once that, um, it's just not the high school teachers responsible for this. It certainly is, and it takes a village. And it starts, you know, such math talent, it starts when the children are really young. And, you know, you know, our elementary teachers and our elementary administration certainly has a big part of this as well. I would also like to thank, um, David in transportation for arranging the ride, because we need to be there and seated by 8:15 AM. And, um, the transportation to Wilkes runs into our elementary runs. So he makes sure we have a bus from Pace to take us there. And, um, it's a big deal, because I'm always worried about getting a ride. Um, okay, so at this time, I'd like to publicly congratulate, um, our students who placed at the competition. Our, the first one, um, I'd like to congratulate Luke Joseph. Luke Joseph is a junior, and he placed third in the junior competition. And he received a hundred-dollar cash reward, uh, award. And, um, he was really proud of his accomplishment, because he got money for doing math, his words, not mine. Okay. I'd also like to congratulate, uh, Sean Rossi. Sean is a junior. He placed first in the, uh, junior competition. And Sean will receive a full four-year scholarship to Wilkes. Remarkable. Remarkable. And if you know Sean, um, he is extremely humble and super quiet. And I don't know, sometimes I have to remind him, he's really the GOAT, you know? Uh, then Shrema Ruparalia. Shrema is our senior who's placed first at the competition at Wilkes. And Shrema also will receive a full four-year scholarship to Wilkes. Shrema's, Shrema's always, every time I see her, I, I'm always like, girl power, girl power. Our, um, our juniors and our seniors, um, also took home, uh, the team award. It's more of a recognition. We, we really didn't get any kind of plaque or anything for it, but it's a recognition. And Tommy, you ready? The team score, I wrote this for you. The team score is calculated by adding the top three individual scores from each individual school. So it makes sense that the juniors would win because Luke and Sean placed first and third. And, um, Shrema definitely helped with the senior award, but I'm not sure who else did. I'm waiting for the scores from Wilkes, so I can approach those kids and give them a shout out and a thank you. Um, I'd like to also thank the community for supporting our students. Like, you know, you can't count Crestwood out. They're always, no matter what, whether it's sports, or PJS, or FBLA, or, or, um, you know, we always bring it. We always, we certainly do. You can't count us out. And what happened on March 4th is historic. It's remarkable. And it, it's just took 77 years, I guess, to, to do. But we, you know, we, we definitely made it. Um, Natasha and Tommy, thank you for letting me blow up your phones that day, because I was so, so excited. All right. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time.
Lori, one other thing you didn't mention that the audience might not know.
Okay.
That competition is for private and public schools.
Yes.
And Crestwood took the first, even with the private schools in there.
Yes. And it's, and it's a majority of Loseran County schools, but Toncanic came. So it, it, it's not just Loseran County that can attend. But it is, Tommy's right, it is public and private. So we, we did good this year. Thank you.
If I may just say something quick. Back in 1990-something, a young Lori Rozitzky took a group of seventh graders to Penn State Hazleton, I think, for, um, math counts competition. And, uh, she encouraged me to be part of that team. So, uh, and it was a great experience, and she's a great teacher. And thank you for all your years of service to the students of this district.
We'll move on to the voting session. Roll call.
Mrs. Bibla?
Here.
Mr. Champy?
Here.
Mrs. Chaitora Zagorik?
Here.
Mr. Webby?
Here.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Here.
Mrs. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Nardone?
Here.
Mr. Boone?
Here.
Mr. McRae?
Here.
Nine members present.
Let me start off, I'd like to seek a motion and a second for the approval of the corrected January treasurer's report and February's treasurer's report.
Motion?
Second.
My blush.
Ball call.
Who is the second? I'm sorry. Boone. Ms. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Champy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitora Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. McRae?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now seek a motion and a second to approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting from February 27th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Financial planning, Mr. Nardone.
I'll make a motion and seek a second for items one and two. So moved?
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Champy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitora Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Under item one, I recuse myself on check number eight zero six nine, yes to all other items.
Mr. McRae?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Transportation, Mr. McCurdy.
Make a motion to, uh, recommend and consider item number one. I so move.
Second. Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Champy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitora Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. McRae?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Policy, Mr. Boone.
Uh, seeking a motion to recommend consideration and approval of items A, B, and C under number one.
Motion?
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Champy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitora Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. McRae?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Human resources, Mrs. Bibla?
I'll be seeking approval of items one through 11. I so move?
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Champy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitora Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. McRae?
Yes.
Motion carried. I want to congratulate and truly say that I'm going to miss the following three teachers, um, that are going to enjoy their next journey in retirement. So, um, Mr. Mayla, thank you so much for your 23 years of your service to our district. Um, Mrs. Morris, 21 years in the district. Um, she's an amazing, um, teacher. She was on the foundation, Mr. Boone. And, um, I want to wish her good luck as well. And Mrs. Doherty, um, for 20 years of your service. So all wonderful teachers, I want to wish them the best. And as I say, every board meeting, we always need subs. So if you ever want to come back and sub, um, we will absolutely take you with open arms. But good luck to all of, um, our wonderful teachers, um, and their retirement.
Thank you. Academic programs, Mr. Champy.
I am seeking approval for items one through five. I so move?
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Champy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitora Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Note item number three, yes to the rest.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. McRae?
Yes.
Motion carried. I want to thank, um, the case instructors. As you can see, there's three listed here that are doing pro bono work, and I want to thank them as well. So Mr. McCloskey, uh, Ms. Panzarella, and Ms. Gibson, thank you so much for, um, offering these adult education classes at no charge, uh, to the district.
Co-curricular, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Um, I am asking for approval of items one through three. Um, I so move.
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Champy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitora Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. McRae?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Physical plant, Mr. Webby.
For recommendation, consideration, and approval of items one through five, I make motion, seek second.
Second. Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Champy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitora Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nardone?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. McRae?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next scheduled committee meeting is Thursday, April 10th, which will be held here at the secondary campus at 4:00 PM. The next scheduled regular board meeting is Thursday, April 17th, will be held here at the secondary campus at 6:30. I seek a motion and a second for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?